I skipped a couple of things in the beginning, so let's go back to the housekeeping. And you all have had a chance to look at the minutes of the November 7th regular meeting. Could I have a motion to remove the 7th minute of the last meeting?
Chairman Brown.
Second.
Second by Secretary Urban. Martin Luther Roe. Minutes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Trava.
Aye.
Commissioner Huneck.
Aye.
Commissioner Chappell.
Aye.
Secretary Irving.
Aye.
Vice President Trump.
Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Judges.
I say total.
Who says that?
Senator Cruz.
Yeah, they made a change.
We can change that.
Change the date of the trial.
The first order by this case.
That was November, November 7th.
As of then.
As of then.
As of then. Thank you.
Resolution, the resolution before you is a resolution of the matter of 9/17 South of Moore Avenue, application D-1412, decided on September 2nd, 2013. Our... No, decided on November 2nd, 2013. Hopefully you memorialize this as a denial of an application of the primary site plan, design, and both areas. I hope you will have an appreciation when you read this 34-page manifesto of this, the fact that our attorney has a right to this. So can I have a motion to approve this denial?
Motion to approve this denial.
Second. Okay. No, I shared with... You were here last week. I shared with Rose, seconded by Councilman Walden and Justice Director Georgiana Gonzalez and Commissioner Trava. Martin Luther Roe.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Huneck.
Aye.
Commissioner Chappell.
Aye.
Secretary Irving.
Aye.
Vice President Trump.
Aye.
Chairman Haas.
Aye. Thank you. One last question. You have not yet, but we're attending our meeting on Monday night. Please yourself, she needs to have a count of how many of us are coming. Monday is coming, Monday night, 6:30. 6:30, your organization meeting. Since we're all here tonight, please make sure you let them know. Okay, now we're going to hear P-0313, 11:09, Nick Lane, Rosemont, Moreport, Mr. Bajat.
Good evening. My name is Brad Bajat, and I'm here on behalf of Rosemont, Moreport. I just wanted to thank the chair.
You've got a little...
I have a little...
You've got hearing noise, not words.
Absolutely. Want to thank the chair and commissioners for listening to us tonight. The application we have, I have four witnesses this evening, two are from a cemetery, one is from the Catholic Church, and we have our engineer who will be testifying. Unlike many of the applications that this board hears, that are business applications, this is an application of a nonprofit cemetery to construct a mausoleum. You know, the cemetery provides burial services to the public with crypts and mausoleums, with graves, and also they're heavily regulated by the Department of Community Affairs, who governs what they can and cannot do. So Louis will testify tonight about that process. They're putting up a mausoleum, we have some pictures here tonight, because when I first started with a mausoleum, I thought it was something to walk inside and look around there. These are just these outdoor structures made of stone with granite on each side where there are tombs, so it's really just an above ground tomb. Like I mentioned before, the DCA oversees all the mausoleum terminating and what can be done, and there's little left for the municipalities, their entitlements regularly cutting and setbacks. This application has been going on for quite some time. The DCA group was actually convened last November, and we came in with our first application to the city in April after realizing we'd have to get site planning. Now, my client, who operates on the board, 12 different seven-ferrys, will testify that many municipalities don't require any site planning approval for a mausoleum because they're so heavily regulated by the Department of Community Affairs. The DCA needs to step in and review all the plans they've been looking at tonight, the architecturals, and approve them, and they regulate this very heavily. What happened, my client will testify to this, is that when a cemetery, which is a nonprofit, decides to build a mausoleum, they have to raise funds by pre-selling them, which is something they did in this case. They pre-sold them to members of the Catholic Church, several hundred, and then a member of the Catholic Church here is going to testify about what happened with that mausoleum. We had anticipated, based on prior rules in other towns, and even an approval in this town for another mausoleum, that that would be a quick process. So unfortunately, and David will testify to this, several members have passed in the Catholic Church who had to be entombed in another mausoleum, who ultimately need to be transferred. So it's a bit of a hardship for the client, and I'm going to ask this board to please grant our approvals, and if there are certain conditions, to make them a condition of the approval because of urgency of the time. My first witness is going to be... Yeah. No.
Let the record reflect that the board chair views himself in these proceedings by sharing with the board on his loss, and thus that he has shared for purposes of the reputation. Counsel, please proceed.
Hey, you said... Right, I understand. Louis said... I understand, just say it.
Counsel, please proceed.
Thank you. So my first witness today, we'd like to have sworn in, is Louis Chicalisis, am I right?
Could you stand up, Louis? Victor, please join me, you both just on, we swear the testimony is definitely with the control to him. Have a seat.
I do, Victor, keep the name, run, sit, play.
Your name and address, who the representative is, where you're from.
Louis Chicalisis, A.L., N.S. I'm a former sheriff, I'm a deputy, I'm a sheriff.
Louis, would you describe your position at Rosemont, Moreport?
Yes, I've been on board trustees for 23 years, I was known as the president. I'm also sitting on the board for 12 other secretaries in the community. And as I said, Rosemont is a nonprofit association, I said it, serving means of the public. Experience for municipal mausoleum applications, good for governing by the state cemetery board, and building mausoleums is approved by the Department of Community Affairs, DCA. It can get approved from DCA and most municipalities, so you can go in with it, approved plan from DCA, as long as it won't be tied to a setback or a requirement, or simply rented and built. This, about 12 years ago, we had site plan for this particular mausoleum that you're seeing in front of you.
Can you just speak a little louder, please, into the wider context?
Yeah, yeah. The plan was approved by my legislative board, same mausoleums that we have in front of you today. That was about 12 years ago, because there was a need to build them, and I was going to pre-sell them before we can build them. We didn't build them, we didn't act on them. So we thought, we're simply going to come in and build into the building department. And they told us, no, you can't do that, you have to now come in for a site plan, which has been extremely, you know, financially burdensome to this cemetery that we've had, to go on probably a year, and also burdensome to the church, because we told them we're going to build it right away. People have purchased, people have died, they have to burn to them, and as David in the church testified, they have to actually come back to two year olds, and it's been a little bit of a pain, and currently, we have to come back to two. So here we are, and the, this process is still going on, and...
Can you explain why you pre-sell the mausoleum, sir?
Yeah, we sell them, the cemetery doesn't have the money to build the building and anticipation that it might be sold. So when this church came forward, and they purchased more than we have in building, at that time, we're able to move forward with the construction. That was, you know, that commitment we gave to the church was over a year ago, and like I said, we didn't anticipate that we were going to have to go through this process. We thought it was a simple building permit, because we already had site planning approval, and because of my experience, what's DCA approved, which these plans have been reviewed and approved by DCA for this mausoleum, a simple concrete box, and we already have three mausoleums on the cemetery. So, and cemeteries can only do three things. We can bury people, we can cremate them, we can put them in mausoleums. That's the only thing we're allowed to do, and the state statute governs a cemetery.
I'd like to have this picture, we have six copies, mark this as a one.
Yeah, free mark.
I, a free mark. Louis, could you take a look at this picture and describe it, and pass it around?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question to our attorney?
Yeah.
Are these supposed to be here or not?
Yes, they are, they are.
We've established that this application needs to be heard by a man.
Yes.
I'm just curious, counsel, when did you get, if you have, I've been sitting here since the fall of 99, and I'm drawing a line about you being here before.
12 years ago.
I wasn't, I wasn't here then, but there was a proper go-back into the late 90s, I believe.
Actually, George Cole was your...
He was, he was the engineer.
Usually I remember something I've heard before, that I was drawing a line.
Yeah.
Why would you like to answer my questions?
I don't...
Okay, that's all right, all right.
Did we establish a run-up, and he was, you remember that?
Yeah, George actually was one of his names. You guys are mumbling all over the place, like it's everything, and I can't understand it. Please try. Say it for me, Senator.
Earlier in this meeting, we ran into the engineer, who was the engineer at the prior approval.
And George, George Cole reminded us 12 years ago, that we had site plan. The picture I'm looking at is, on the left-hand side, you see the mausoleum, and this is a, in the grass area with a weight in front of that mausoleum, is where the new mausoleum of a plan to build, is a mirror image of this picture. So it's shown mausoleum on the left, and if you can imagine, another mausoleum sitting right in front of it.
And this is a picture of Rosemont Cemetery?
Yes, Rosemont, Moreport.
Okay. And there's an existing mausoleum right there. Can you describe the new mausoleum compared to the one that is shown in the picture?
It's identical, size, shape, number of bricks.
Through the long hand, exactly, describe the second picture, mark A2.
The second picture is of two mausoleums that are towards the Hilton Hotel on the cemetery property. One is completed, as you can see in the picture, and the other one is during the construction process. You can see it's a port concrete, and it's spaced with block and granite.
Okay.
Is that a state of it now?
I'm sorry.
Is that a state practice agreement, or is this...
No, this was completed several years ago, and our proposal calls for another building that's going to be clustered next to this one, and then two buildings, one we're planning to build right away, and one behind it, which are this application, which is basically a 20-year master plan. We want to build one right away, and over the next 20 years, we'll finish up the project.
Does anyone have any more questions for this witness? I may need to recall him, but that's all I have right now.
Commissioner, any questions?
Okay, thank you, Louis. My next witness is David Solomon, who was here from St. Mark's Catholic Church. I'd like to have him sworn in.
You raise your right hand, you're solemn, you swear the testimony, David, will you repeat the local conduct of conduct?
Yes.
Have a seat, please, David. State your name, anybody, your name, give your address, please.
My name is David Solomon, S.O.L., I, M.A.N., 43 Comstock Avenue, St. Anne of New York,
Thank you, David. David, could you describe your position with the church?
I'm ordained deacon at St. Mark's Church in Jersey City.
And can you explain the process of the purchase with Rosemont Cemetery?
We found the need with our growing congregation that the congregation itself wanted to be close together in the area also, helps build the community stronger together, helps build the ties to the community, so we had to enter agreement with Rosemont Cemetery to have a structure, so we built this purpose, because we have a congregation, almost 700 families.
And the intent is that they would all be buried in this mausoleum?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and since you entered into this agreement, have any of the members passed away?
Yes, we've had about a dozen families that have had people pass away.
And can you describe what happened with those people?
Well, because of the agreement we have with them, they would temporarily bury at Rosemont, and then once this new structure is approved, instructed, the families will then have to come back out to the cemetery, as well as the priests and the deacons, and have to be a secondary service. They will have to, the bodies will have to be moved from the ground into the new building structure.
And can you describe the demographic of your church?
Well, we've been, we're the first church established in one of America, so we've been there since the late 60s, so we do have an ancient congregation, and the need has become stronger and stronger as time goes on.
And can you describe the burden of having to, you know, bury the one mausoleum and then move to a new one?
Well, it really opens up new wounds over, and the families, they have to come out, because we are such a tight community, you know, we have the issue where it's not just a matter of just the family that comes out, the friends of the family, the priests of the church, the deacons all have to come out, and have to go through the whole trauma. It's very tiresome, because you have one person passing away after another, another person, very traumatic for the individual, that has to relive this whole process all over again. The things that I said at the burial site are very things of sadness in the morning, so it does take this whole toll on the congregation.
And so do you have a request for this board?
Yes, please, I would, the members of this board, please approve this request to help in our congregation, and the need has become stronger and stronger as time goes on, and then seeing this in the eyes of the congregation, they are really being hurt by this, they're concerned about having to come out once again and go through this whole process.
Thank you, David, I don't have any more questions for David.
Where is your congregation?
Looking in Jersey City, Jersey City.
So where are your people?
Correct.
I have a question, you told me about the mausoleum for burial, is that just to your church, or was it to the public, or who was that overall?
Who was that overall, come to? It's just for the church, or the church too? And when they purchased half the buildings they had, we committed to build it, and that was a year ago. That's why, you know, we had, I think it's 12 families that passed away, that burned to, and now we have to have the funeral, because the building's not built, that's why we're, we're to mausoleum.
To be clear, they purchased approximately half, is the other half being sold to the public or owned to this church?
Okay. What's the time period? What is the time period when people...
Sorry?
How long has it been since you've been doing the pre-burial for work? What's the time period that you've been doing this?
Pre-selling?
Ah, let's think of people, that can be me and Joe's. How long has this, this been going on, or...
I think maybe you can answer that, how... Well, we entered into a secret place, say, a little over a year ago, and now that approximately coming in our taste for construction, plus that time does already pass, so it's a year. Now, what do they have to come back and do, the whole process all over again?
Just to be clear, your testimony is that you entered into this agreement approximately one year ago, and since that, longer than a year ago, since that time, about a dozen members have been entombed in a, another mausoleum temporarily?
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I, this is very, I want to make sure I understand this, you, you went through the process of planning this, selling the crypts, and this is the first time that you're coming before us without, you had no prior knowledge that you had to applaud first, no one knew to do that, so you're asking for a retroactive approval of this? I don't understand.
Commissioner, we're not asking for retroactive approval. This has not been built yet, we're here for site plan, it has not been built, there's another mausoleum.
Well, most applications haven't been built yet, that's why they come here before they start the project, to make sure everything is in order. Wasn't that your responsibility, notwithstanding the sadness of, you know, not the area, but is that, is that this committee's matter?
Well, the reasoning, which was the testimony of the applicant, was that he had a prior approval from, you know, 12 years ago, which he thought was so good, and later...
You can't think, as you can't assume, you can't, 12 years ago, most of the people weren't even on this board.
And he's also on the board of 12 other cemeteries, which is his testimony, and in all of that, it doesn't matter, whatever applied in other places, but it does not matter, that's the material. But you're questioning why this was done this way, and that was his experience. Well, that even when he came before this board 12 years ago, it was a very streamlined process, and it went through in a few months, and in most of the other communities, they do not require a site plan.
We're not most of the other communities, we're Elizabeth, we have certain procedures here.
That's why we're here.
People come before here, come before us with a project that they were proposing, that's half-done already, and then they just found out, and you can't bury people, which is sad, I'm sorry to hear that, but, you know, to me, that's, it sets a bad precedent, and it's, I consider it a retroactive, asking for a retroactive approval?
Commissioner, we did obtain approval from the 12 years ago.
No, no, sir, it was 23 years ago, it was 1990.
Oh, it wasn't 1990?
Oh, it was 70.
No. We received approval from the Department of Community Affairs before this was done, okay?
Not from this board?
Not from this board. We're here to get the approval from this board, and nothing was constructed yet, but we were pre-planning the project, which must be done in a nonprofit, in order to raise the money to even go through, my client has testified, I think, he's spent, you know, I don't know, 80, up to $80,000 to spend on this application, and $250,000 to construct it, he cannot begin the process until he pre-sells. In the past, there hasn't been a year or two delay in doing this. We did make our initial application of this board in the spring, there've been three or four revisions of the plans, working with the engineer, and we're here today with, you know, a third or fourth revised set of plans. This is a very busy board, you guys have had some very long projects before us, and we had been put off several times. We're testifying to this aspect of the application, so that the board understands that this is a time-sensitive project for the people that are involved, and it was not planned to be this way, based on the testimony that's been provided, this was unexpected.
Well, I don't know what to say.
I presume that it's in common practice, past practice, to sell before you build?
That's how it's done, I'm aware. Again, I also testified that cemeteries can only do three things, and we're governed by, can only do three things, and we're governed by the state cemetery board. We can bury people, we can put them in mausoleums, and we can cremate them, and that's by the state statute, so as long as we meet heightened setback requirements with a building of mausoleum, and as long as we bury people on the ground, and as long as we cremate them according to D.E.P. regulations, that's what we can do, and that's, you know, and municipalities really have approval over setback in height.
But you also say that...
Where do you get this, does that...
Sorry.
Where do you get this information that the municipality will need approval over heightened setbacks? Well, Victor, I can cite the ordinance, did provide a copy to board attorney today, but it's the state cemetery statute that says that with regarding a mausoleum, which is under the Cemetery Act, title 45, 27-27, says any ordinance passed by a municipality for the construction of a mausoleum that limits anything except heightened setback is of no effect. Yeah, but then with the limits, but it doesn't say anything that that's all the municipality has jurisdiction.
It doesn't say what?
It doesn't state that the municipality is limited in its jurisdiction as far as training. The Department of Community Affairs, under you, training board.
The exact language of the statute, under 45, call on 27-27, subparagraph B, reads, Department of Community Affairs, shall adopt regulations concerning construction of public mausoleums, which shall conform with the definition of public mausoleum as defined in this statute. Regulations shall be standards adopted in the subcodes of the Uniform Construction Code or other national law codes or standards. But Commissioner may adopt official standards if they are for public use. The Commissioner finds that they are necessary to protect public interest. Municipality may enact zoning ordinances to provide for reasonable heightened setback requirements, and keep them with standards established for property immediately abiding cemetery. But any other ordinance regulating construction of mausoleums shall be of no effect. That's not really so that, you know, wind up where a mausoleum is placed a foot off the Rock Bay line, behind a bunch of residential homes, or next to a school, or really locate in such a manner where it's really intrusive on the adjacent property. It doesn't, it certainly means a mausoleum that is constructed and work that is done still must meet all uniform construction code requirements. If those code requirements supersede the municipal ordinance, then they apply. If they're consistent with the municipal ordinance, they still have to be met by the applicant. What it's also done, it's meant to do, is to say, look, if you have a mausoleum that goes up to a certain height in a residential area, where only one or two-story structures are permitted, you, you know, it's kind of something that fits within the area, especially when there's some of these newer facilities are being built, where there are well-established secretaries, like might be in residential areas, not so much this one, because of its location near other secretaries in the northern end of the community. But that's what it is meant to entail. So it's, because with the current, which prevent towns from accessing the ordinance, it says a mausoleum can be heightened... So it's, because with the current rules to prevent towns from casting the ordinance, it says a mausoleum can't be hired intentionally while it makes an attractive build. Or you can't put it within a hundred foot of a house, so if he's only got a 200-foot lot, you can't fit it. As if you were a town, you cannot write any ordinance to try to exclude mausoleums in indirect manner by using all standards for height, setback, front, rear, side, other standards so as to try to include their construction, hasn't been meant in person.
What is our responsibility as commissioners, if we're not, we're all...
No, you're conducting a site plan application issue within it and there's nothing here in the city ordinance that is excluding the construction of this. It still doesn't meet the appropriate code requirements. Mr. Venegas is a numerous letter with their engineer trying to address a number of concerns regarding the overall site and they're going to have to place testimony over here tonight with their engineer to try and address these items to ensure that the site is properly maintained, that you're not going to have any drainage or lightning or other items that are a necessary part of any development, whether it's a mausoleum or others at the structure. The ordinance is not restricted, so it's not as if the ordinance is that are being applied or suddenly created as an impediment to having a mausoleum built. As I understand the plans, even if the board hears them, give the fact the site is bisectioned by the municipal board or newer, their program for the newer, unless you wrote it down.
We've noticed it, sir.
Okay, so you have an application pending there. So they're not done even if this board approves it, they still gotta go to Newark and get approval from their central plan board. I assume plenty would be there?
Yeah, we've sent those to Newark, my contact with them, I think they, you know, made the bird.
Have you made a formal application?
No.
Okay. So they're not, even if this board asks favorably, they still gotta go to Newark and get approval there, as I like to play it. So they've got a few hurdles beyond the night left, Charles.
So in other words, they have other witnesses, they have...
Well, you know, you have an engineer here.
Because we have our engineer.
They have an engineer here. For the record, we've had four reports issued by Harvard Consultants on this application. Fourth of those recently being number two. There were fire letters dated September 11, 2013, July 26, 2013. And the first letter was dated May 30, 2013. And this council explained the application to be carried in part to afford them the opportunity to address a myriad of concerns that have been raised by the board planner in those various reports, to address certain deficiencies that have been identified and planned. And also in part because we knew this would involve multiple witnesses application. Other nights when we'd be here with the car wash application and others when we knew we were going to spend the night, it wasn't fair to them just as we told other applicants. Guys, we're not reaching them, they'll spend the money to bring everybody here to sit and watch for three hours and then go home, that's not fair to them. They're spending the money for their professionals. So that's how they wound up starting back in May and not getting here until now. Plus over other, I believe some other outstanding code issues regarding the function of the crematorium that we've been addressing from DDP and with the U.S. City, which also needed to get resolved. So that was being done concurrently with getting these issues resolved to the point where this application was in sufficient position to be started to now.
Yeah, and I don't want to say what we're testifying to today. We wanted to lay the backdrop for why we're here, we acknowledge we need these boards approval, we understand that. But this is a unique situation that differs from many others in that if the Department of Community Affairs approves you and says you can build a mausoleum and you're building it on a cemetery, it's the only place we can put these in New Jersey, there's only a couple in Easttown. The planning board can say, we'd like you to do this, this and this, but the application can't be denied as far as being able to put that mausoleum there. And that was kind of the point, is that the state passed this ordinance, as Mr. Mackman explained, so that municipalities couldn't prevent a mausoleum from being built because they realized that this is something we need as a, as a community. We need cemeteries, we need mausoleums, we need crematories, unfortunately, we do. So there's, it is run by the state, governed by the state to that extent. And the other issues, which we're going to testify to in a few minutes with our engineer, we've been working with the board engineer to address. And we've addressed most of them, but there's a few that we'll discuss later. Does anyone have any more questions for David Solomon, who's about the church?
Thank you, other?
No. Okay, thank you very much.
Do you have a quick one with Mr. Chekles? What time does the sale of... What are the hours? Is that the hours of sale of?
Cemetery hours, seven. What are the hours? Eight thirty or four thirty?
And are... Is there someone there after four thirty?
Sometimes.
Okay, what are they doing after four thirty?
I...
What are they doing in this location after four thirty?
Possibly cremation.
Possibly what?
Cremation. A cremation.
So cremations, so you have, you have a contractor for the city in Newark for cremations?
Sorry?
Do you have a contractor, do you have a contract for cremations?
Contract for cremation?
For cremations, do you have contracts? I don't know how this works.
Someone dies, they go to the funeral, they show up and...
Okay, there's paperwork, I guess, you have to go there ahead of time. I did just, I just didn't drive, I was heading for your body.
In other words, what happens is the trouble of cremation, cremations, not not cremations, the trouble, funeral wants to come by at a point in the day, they will trouble the bodies cremated and depending on the volume, if they have to stay later to finish cremation.
Okay. So the crematory, the crematory, how late do they go?
It depends on the volume, the bodies they have.
Okay, so it could go twelve o'clock or one hour and more.
It could.
The next witness I'd like to call is I'm on our engineer. Of course, we'd like to have a personal.
You're sounding this way with testimony you're giving to be the truth. The whole truth, I think of the truth. You see, pick your two and write your own, you take a hundred and fifty, state your names, start your name and give your address.
Noncon, A B N A N, K H B N, 150 River Road, Montford, New Jersey, 07045.
And Mr. Combe, have you testified before any boards in Elizabeth, New York?
Yes, I have.
Which board was that?
I'm not sure, it was planning or zoning, I was like five, six years back.
Okay, and at that time, were you qualified and accepted as an expert?
Engineer. It was a preferred freezer application. It was a preferred freezer application that I testified as an expert.
Okay, I was saying, you're accepted as an expert?
Thank you.
Would the license here is professional, you're in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And how long have you had the license, sir?
Six, nineteen ninety-six.
What did you do for...
Well, um...
His word, if you just...
I don't get it, right?
Uh, okay.
I would like to take you through, as I've mentioned a couple of times, we've been going back and forth with letters between the town engineer and your office. And I'd like to address the last letter that Mr. Venegas has sent on December 2nd and kind of go through that and explain the comments that Mr. Venegas made there. I know he responded to him in writing and I think that a letter has been distributed to the board, that's the December 5th letter. It was Martin handed out this evening.
Martin, you have a copy of that letter?
Everyone has.
Okay, that's fine. For the record, this is a letter from G W Z Engineering, dated December 5, 2013. For page, sign those, correct, sir?
That's right.
Okay, looking at Mr. Venegas's letter of December 2nd, could you address the comments where he noted that there were still outstanding issues he would like to see addressed, starting with, I believe, your head?
The 4A item basically asked for providing more detailing for the existing drainage channels and inlet, particular pipe calculations.
In particularly?
Pipe calculations.
Pipe.
For the runoff, my response to that comment is, and I think just going back a bit, what Mr. Venegas is, that it is a checklist item and a very serious... Mr. Venegas takes that it's a checklist item and not knowing any of this information will trigger our areas. So what our response is, then, we will provide that information. And just to explain a little bit more, most of these inlets and the areas that are draining to these inlets and the pipes, they're all existing. They are not part of the proposed project as far as any additional flow except for one inlet which proposed drywall system from the mausoleum will be tied for the overflow pipe. But if we did, we can provide for the existing conditions, pipe damage, so we will satisfy that requirement.
So is your testimony that the only additional pipe will be dealt with by the, the drywall that's on the plans for the proposed site?
To that end, yes.
And can you describe the area of the site that in question, how many acres it is?
The site is now, last night, it's forty acres.
Okay.
And the site is partly Newark, partly Elizabeth.
Okay.
I would say ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of the site is grass with the barriers throughout the site. Except with the barriers.
There, there, can you hold that to me about maybe the margins and...
Is that...
Yeah, with the barriers throughout the site. And the only area that is developed beside the graves is the office building, the crematory and roadway or the circulation. And the road circulation around it.
Sir, it's easy to face your testimony. Can you turn me back, I'm counting something.
No.
Sorry.
So in your opinion, does this present any drainage issues having that ninety-six percent plus area grass? Is that favorable?
I'll say, I have an objection to that comment. We're giving no evidence in this testimony.
I'm sorry, David.
There's no evidence given to this office to verify this testimony.
I think what we'll do is we'll go through each item and if you believe there's sort of additional information that's needed, then we're going to identify that and determine what the applicant's information, additional information is needed before the board takes, makes a final decision on the application. I think that would be very well reported, yeah.
Okay. There are two, 5A and 5D also deal with runoff and storm flow. Can you supplement your last answer to include those?
Yes, as stated in my letter dated today, December 5th, we acknowledge those comments and we will provide the information as requested.
So this is information you will supply?
That's right.
All right. Just for point of reference at this point, any information is requested that needs to be supplied, when it is submitted, submitted directly to Mr. Vera's Board Secretary, but transmitted electronic copies directly to Mr. Venegas's office and mind so that the information is getting directly to him?
Will.
All right, so that's item 5A, 4A, so far we have additional information, okay?
Same as item 5D, the other dividend, we will provide information as requested. Item 6A, 6B are satisfied.
How are they satisfied, sir?
We provided additional information that was requested prior comment.
Mr. Venegas's letter reflects that they're satisfied.
Yes, 6A was the water line and we had questions, they did supply the city with the easement, which does contain the water line, the gas line and every utility. Water line, the gas line and other utilities which may exist, so 6A is satisfied. It also satisfied 6B.
Okay, so let's move on to 6C.
6C is also satisfied because the gas line is also in that easement, so we do have that information. 6P is satisfied, so 7A?
7A referenced the parking, the drywires and the parking area condition, the pavement condition. The applicant acknowledged portions of the parking area and the drywall is in disrepair. And based on the current plans, he is proposing to mill and repair sections of the drywires and the parking area. And that is based on my field visit and inspection of the pavement. We determined sections which are definitely in disrepair and need some kind of attention. And there are certain areas or certain portions within the drywall which are physically in a good condition and still have some usable life left. So those are the areas that will be excluded in the repairs. And the areas that will be repaired are shown on our revised plans.
And those plans are dated what, sir?
Stated October 25th, 2013.
Just a favor, if you're participating, would you please send me a set of plot and my office?
Sure.
And load the part around.
Sure.
Thank you.
7, 7I, 7H?
So just back to 7A, the comment from the engineer was that there was a large area to repave and based on your inspection, a good portion of that area is going to get attention, but there's certain parts that instead of just repaving everything that you expect and you feel are in good, stable condition right now?
That's right.
Okay, on to 7M.
7A is tied to the drywires. We understand that the existing drywires are not all the requirements of the city ordinance's requirements, but there is a hardship in complying with this requirement because adjacent to the drywires, next to the curb, we have barriers throughout. So there is, physically it's not possible to widen, we can give the applicant the desire to because of the presence of the graves around the drywires.
She asked, sir, the losses, I looked at these. Is that actually depicted on these sheets, see?
Yeah, I can verify that. I did go out there on a number of occasions, I did witness a long existing curbing. And I also stated in my letter that, you know, they are limited by the drywall and I acknowledged that.
I would just ask if you made other revisions, sir, if there was some deviation on the plans, please pull one.
Sure.
Moving on, 8A is satisfied as per Mr. Venegas's letter. Item 9, 8U F has to do with site lighting, could you address that condition?
Sure. Site lighting is again, I went out, believe, I have a date on the plan, I think it was around eight thirty, nine o'clock. I went out to the site with the light meter to measure the light intensities at the site during the nighttime. And it was depicted in the plan, it was submitted. And we acknowledge there are areas where the existing lighting doesn't conform to the city requirements. However, they do meet the minimum... However, they do meet the minimum safety requirement in the areas, in the parking areas and the dry aisles, which is about point two foot candles.
Where did you get the information that point two is satisfied?
It's the American Association of Immigration Engineers. They recommend that minimum safety for circulation.
But this is not just circulation, this is parking?
The parking is.
There'll be two foot candles, not point two?
The two foot candle is not city ordinance and we acknowledge that we don't comply with the city ordinance. Yeah, we don't notice that on this line.
Alright, so this one goes in the information to be supplied from Mr. Veneger, yeah?
Yes, and again, if the board wishes, like the board desires, like it has to be the two foot candles, we can augment the existing lighting, renovation of lighting.
That would be recommended.
The applicant has indicated to me that we can't do that, but as a practical matter, this is a cemetery and its operation hours are during daylight hours. So, you know, it's operated for many years this way. We don't see a practical need for it, although we would be agreeable to add the additional lighting, which is a minor, right?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're on to ten.
Ten doesn't seem to have eleven, A through K as a comment?
Let me describe the ten, one, two, three, four.
Okay, sure, you can come.
Eleven, ten, eleven basically deals with, the item, ten, A, eleven, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. They deals with in general the landscape. In the proposed plan, they are proposing eleven Leland Cypress Evergreen Trees to be planted around the, the, around the car, to supply around the car. Let me give you the certification.
Certification, I'll give you that. Stop hitting the machine, please, sir, it's an expensive item.
What we are proposing is eleven Leland Cypress Evergreen Trees, L A N D I I. Cypress trees. And on the southern edge of the pavement area that is proposed to be repaired. And the reason we picked this particular species is based on the experience of the applicant. For the cemetery use, it usually works very good in the cemetery environment. Grow fast, environment, they grow fast and they provide good screening.
And Louis, can you qualify the answers since this is based on, is referenced here?
One would be satisfied, please, it's one and a half.
Okay, wait.
Please.
Yeah, that's my response to that item.
Okay, can you continue and address the other comments?
The rest of the letter relates to section seventeen, point twenty-eight, point one, two, zero, point G. Item one deals with the driving, parking as discussed above. So we recommended back response to see comment seven A, which we discussed earlier.
This has already previously been testified?
That's right.
Okay. And with number two, this item also was previously testified to in regards to the pipe flow calculation.
Correct.
Number three discusses the A D A's handicap parking space.
Yeah, that's been satisfied.
Four appears to be a bit similar to what we testified to in regards to storm choice that we need to add on.
That is pretty much goes back to the previous testimony that we will provide information.
Five also deals with lighting we had just testified to. Six is land speeding which we had just discussed.
That's correct.
Moving on to general comments, is there anything in this comments which you'd like to comment on or introduce the testimony on?
I believe the general comments are a summary of the previous comments. There's nothing that's in the general section that is either not being testified or we won't be able to compile it.
Most of them say addressed and. One of them is addressed too. I believe.
I would like to touch this little bit on, you know, section item ten. It says the applicant has addressed our concern as to the additional muslumium on the plans. She, C dash O three, future development, C dash O three, future developmental master site plan. That's right, I just want to bring to the board's attention, one of the drawing that we submitted in the site plan is the future frontier master plan as testified by Mr. Chipley's that shows the proposed future muslumium additions on the site.
And which you said, sir?
C dash. C dash O four.
As in the plan's previous, previously submitted to the board?
That's right.
How did you usually prefer to make in Mr. Veneger's report on page five regarding the utilities we gave us off?
Yeah, right.
We provided a copy of the utilities went to Mr. Veneger.
And so you sent me that?
Yes, and it's depicted on the plans.
Is that still an active S one?
Yes. Services of the hotel. The hotel used to be apart from the details seen and from what the applicant has told me, apart of the cemetery, and it was sold off at the time, and it was granted so that they could run the utilities to the cemetery.
And item six and seven regarding lines that are in need of cleaning up?
No more certificate is my impression. It is my understanding based on what applicant mentioned that those inlets and the tarsoas have been already reclaimed.
Alright, if you would please.
What did that?
I was going to ask you if you would please confirm that and supply that information to the board from Mr. Veneger's office.
Yeah, we will give you that.
Thank you.
We testified that that has occurred. I can have my advocate testify, I've been waiting to recall.
Well, let's finish with the board's word as that I made. Okay, that's fine. Okay, so you were at, or you want to go back to your letter then?
I'll give it to my attorney.
I think we've gone through Mr. Veneger's letter and the testimony that that advocate corresponded to his letter of December 5th. It's been submitted and circulated to the board for some sort of.
You have further testimony, engineer?
Do you have additional testimony?
No, I have my testimony.
Questions, are there any further questions? The applicant?
Right, I want to. I have another question. Just for your application, just because we sent a letter from the board's knowledge saying that they'll do it with the variances required because technically it has not been satisfied. So an explanation on the letter or during testimony is that we will supply not be, currently in the application as it sits tonight, needs these variances. Would you agree to that? Because you have not supplied the information.
Mr. Veneger, I don't know if I agree that they're variances, they're checklist requirements. I don't think we need any variances for this approval.
Oh, when you deviate, which end is provided, which would be asking for variation from this board?
But that's not a traditional variance that there would be a way for.
There is no drainage information supplied.
Sorry, David, just been sorry to hit you.
There is no drainage information supplied, is what we mean to that. The variance to verbally state you provide this information is not satisfied. The variance.
And addressing Mr. Veneger's comment, I think the applicant has advised, we've gone through this letter, that additional information is going to have to be supplied in order for Mr. Veneger to make a determination if the checklist item is satisfied. Once that's completed, if there's an issue as to whether an item is a checklist item requiring deviation or it's an item where there may or may not be need for actual ball variances, I think I think we can make that determination and get them that additional information supplied before you, you're back in the next year. I think that's the word. So January, the board, you guys support?
January 2nd.
Okay, so I can just add part of a month to address this.
Well, the other question was, these comments came out four months ago to me. And I'll give you a comment nine that I'll give to you next time.
Well, I think what we're going to advise the applicant is, are you ready to go over?
Yes, sir, same.
Veneger's second, right? Okay, so you've got to get that information from Mr. Veneger, he's two weeks prior to January 2nd, so whatever. That is on the calendar. Or let's just say two weeks from tonight, is that sufficient to respond to the council? That'd be December 19th.
Yeah, I'm looking at the prior letters and I hadn't known about the pipe flow calculation requirement, I don't believe.
Remember, I mean, just a clarification, we have submitted the stormwater design calculations. They, I find like the original was submitted. The first stormwater report was submitted in April 10th, 2013. And based on the comments we received by Mr. Veneger's office, we revised the stormwater report on June 27th, 2013, and we submitted that. The comments we are talking in, the open comments regarding the stormwater only relates to the inlets that are existing. It has, those inlets, as I mentioned in my testimony earlier, they don't affect what the proposed improvements would be, except for one inlet, overflow pipe.
And that's, and that's the problem I'm having with this application. You can't just say something's pre-existing. It's going to be the way it is and we're just doing that. When you come before a board with a site in an application, you're reopening whatever you're doing in that area. So if there's storm sewers out there that don't conform, this board or applicant has every right to ask you to analyze that and see how, how well they conform or don't conform. You're here before a board, you just can't say, well, I'm going to build a shadow in here. What exists, exists. Because you gave no evidence that what exists is functioning properly. You're showing pipes going into pipes that, there's no evidence that that pipe function properly. When I went out to the field to inspect this project, the pipes were told they clog with silk. I never saw any trucks cleaning them. I was never done with it. I never saw any trucks cleaning the silk. The inlet were told they clog. That was on my letter four months ago. Four months ago, standard level of care, New Jersey Virginery Plant, we're supposed to analyze existing site. Just because it exists doesn't mean it exists in satisfactory condition. That's what I've been asking for. And what I've been getting back is it exists and we're not touching it. And what I've been saying, I don't care if it exists. You have to analyze it because you're affecting the area. Testimony tonight that it could go all hours of the night. The crematorium, not employees, the people that work for, the drivers, I was out there, I saw cremation go on. There was drivers coming out, kind of having a cigarette, but no one. We're driving and parking in an area that's not lit properly. So on one end, someone says, well, we don't need lighting. And on the other end, the testimony is we have to be around here 24/7. So there's so much, I'm giving back this point of this review letter that, oh, well, I'll address it later. I don't know.
The later will be before the next year. But we're forwarding the applicant the opportunity to address the shortfalls and that's confirmed on this one.
But Mr. Veneger, I know you had asked for drainage plans in the prior letter and they were submitted, but the one thing missing was the pipe flow calculations, is that accurate?
Well, not because technically when you do a site, and I wind it into it all night, you take every inlet in the general area and create a drainage area. You figure out the flow, general area flows of the inlet, and then you do a pipe flow calculation. And if there is vacuuming with the storm sewer, you show where it backs up and it doesn't affect the building or some of the creeps in the area. So we do pipe flow calculations, it shows the network of pipes, how they function during weather intensity of storms. That, that is standard New Jersey engineering level of care. Doesn't deviate town to town. I have yet to see that in this application. Not the drainage board showing I got the two, two location bases and.
I'm sorry, not the name.
Two location bases in, or maybe the cemetery charge. We're asking for us to analyze the storm sewer system in the general area because, you know, to use the broken example, New York Terrible Island, we just here earlier, they were just a bunch of tanks. But when we asked them to analyze their system, it was, it was in existence for 50 years. They finally analyzed it and told, the entire system wasn't working. They went out and redid it and installed a new system. They told me, thank God we did, because saying it could have killed us would be worse. So New York Terrible Island is a bunch of metal tanks, no different. When they analyzed the system that existed prior to the last apartment, they found out the system was not operating properly. It was an existing system. We asked them to upgrade the existing system even though they were just putting a couple of tanks in. And they spent a million dollars on upgrades, but thank God they did. We're not saying a million dollars on upgrades for this section of the yard, but I am saying that that's the level of care we're looking for.
And you have a problem with submitting those afterwards considering that this is a 14 acre grass site and these lightning will not result in any major?
What I'm saying is, I infer not a letter is not resetting that new requirement. That's like saying I'll give you a building plans later. But we can make a condition of the approval to your satisfaction because they're well developed, but great now as your application spans. You have not submitted the information.
I understand that. My request is, do you have a problem with any condition of this approval considering the fact that there are time sensitive issues here?
We have done that sometimes in the past, not always. But granted, we had this four months ago and it hasn't been addressed, yeah, you have a problem.
I felt like there might have been a miscommunication between what the engineer understood was the level of care and now it's sort of clear. You and I met in your office a few months ago and I think we walked away with perhaps a different understanding.
Yeah, well, you addressed a number of things, I mean, you know, you did a good job with the easements and the pipe information you gave me and the cemetery shore, that was great. I mean, you kind of showed me what the cemetery shore was. Now I know that it doesn't want to do a building, that was great. Now I know that it doesn't want to do a building, that was great. The water service should be taken care of, but, you know, not everything's taken care of. It seems, I mean, also there was going to be improvements. I don't think I've ever approved of the plan where you build the parking lot. I don't think I've ever approved of an application where we build the parking lot. It's either you build it all, maybe all, we built this seven hundred road. I've never approved a plan where you didn't have the parking lot and they didn't do the other parking lot.
Mr. Benega, isn't the, I think our current point is actually sure that we're doing the entire parking lot. It's just some of the road service.
Not the.
Not the parking area.
We don't do the entire parking lot. And in front of the chapel, you're doing some of that area. You have a couple of chapels there, you have services. That's not told you that either. So there's a chapel there and the services at nights and weekends. I mean, during the weekends and stuff, so that is also partially. No, you can plan to not show the entire parking area.
You know, the testimony from our engineer is that those areas that aren't disrepair are being addressed and the ones that are still serviceable are not. And, you know, unlike the traditional business, this is a nonprofit. And, you know, it would be nice to repay the entire parking lot, but there's a great expense in doing that. And I mean, our testimony that we're addressing the safety concerns that your office has set forth.
Well, a nonprofit doesn't mean that you don't function. You know, that you don't function having money, revenues, and improvements. Being a nonprofit has no bearing on making improvements to the site. If I work for nonprofits every day, in any way, come in and say, we're a nonprofit, I have to let a parking lot, I've never heard of that line. Also, I've worked for cemetery, I've never heard of it. I've worked for certain cemetery and they build crips without pre-sale. I mean, to my knowledge, another requirement, pre-sale crips, another requirement to construct them, you can be struck a trip tomorrow on their dollar. Not saying how to spend their money. There was testimony earlier about that. I have a little problem with that. I mean, testimony that nonprofits only sell crips pre-sale. We decided that all these cat crips, intended possibly, they were not only sold. So just bring that up.
Well, Mr. Benega, obviously the remaining issues have to do with your letter. I think we've testified to the other things and I just want to isolate what those are. We've discussed the drains, which I understand require from Mr. Con. The lighting, which the applicant has agreed to increase to meet standards of the town. And then finally, parking, which is really the only thing I think that we're perhaps not seeing quite eye to eye on. And that is that Mr. Con, there are certain areas that are in serviceable condition and not need a repair. And while we understand that it's nice to just repay everything, there are financial constraints and when those are dis-repaired, you know, get repaired, but right now they seem to be fine. And I think that's the only issue we perhaps not see eye on. Everything else I think we're in agreement with.
And talk to the board, I appreciate it.
Yes, you can get this information to Mr. Benega at least. Right, two weeks ago.
I believe that. Our preference would be that we would attempt to get an approval subject to those because of the time constraints we're under, because of the testimony that's provided, that, you know, that there are people dying. And, you know, these are simply checklist requirements that we will submit, will adhere to, and we will do them subject to the engineer's approval, which we've done twenty-five of the other concerns that have been raised. These are down to two or three, and we're asking this board's, you know, compassion for this particular situation. And as Mr. Benega testified to, sometimes through our conditions, and it is an option for this board to consider, we don't have to continue to delay. There's been incredible delays in doing this and we've been doing our best to comply and there've been delays that sometimes were our fault, other times were just a function of this board's being very busy. So we'd rather not come back, like, you know, applicant is here tonight and January is an extra burden, you know, we would prefer the board would consider that.
I think if the amount of information is required, Mr. Benega's already requested he had to review that before he can make a final recommendation to the board. You have no more witnesses that you wish to present, or delay to see.
No, I think this is, excuse me, this is about. I'd like to recall the applicant to address two of the concerns that we have when we're going through Mr. Con's testimony. Louis James. Can you address the landscaping discussion that Mr. Con was having earlier regarding Mr. Benega's letter?
They were talking about the type of trees used here. I have used the leland cypress in many of my other cemeteryists and they created.
What?
The leland cypress trees. They are perfect for this situation. They're a beautiful screen. I successfully used them in multiple cemeteryists and I think it's the correct tree to use in this situation. That's why we have some there. Just want to plan more. Okay, to the second part, they cleaned out the storm sewer as soon as Mr. Benega recommended that that happened and I had guys out there cleaning out the storm sewer source. And I personally watched him clean them out.
Do you know when that was?
That was when he requested it, probably a week after that when Adman came down to do his investigation.
Well, I went back out there and I didn't see it, but maybe done. That was a while ago, a month. Once I go back out there.
It was several months ago.
I thought it was probably the leland cypress that was the comment from my landscape architect says that they need a little bit of room, the way they can show them so close together, and the leland cypress grow so large that the way they were depicted on the plan, they are a little tightly grouped. And that's what it meant. We didn't really object to it, just that the way they were shown on the plan, they're a little too close to one another. And my landscape architect felt they needed a little bit more room to grow. They do grow large.
Yeah, they do grow large. I like that. I like that structure. It's more regreting cemetery.
Just when you plan, you probably know better than I do. Have a plan, the cypress should know better than my landscape architect had a show. My landscape architect.
I have one more witness who's here and I'd like to call, he's the manager of the Rose Farm Office.
State your name, your address, please.
My name is Michael Barata, B-A-R-A-T-A, eighty Waterman Avenue, Rumson, New Jersey.
Thank you. Michael, would you describe your position at Rose Farm Office?
I'm the manager. I handle burial, cremation, and family care.
Okay, and you're there several days a week?
Yes.
Okay. And can you address something that's sort of what you've been talking about and then your comment that you thought would be helpful to the board?
I handle all the families that come in. The twelve families that have had to wait to put their loved one in this other building and waiting to get the approval from the board are in extreme pain and I feel their pain. They call me monthly, they call me weekly, they call me daily. Not only are we affecting those twelve people, those people have sons, daughters, grandchildren. And the Copti community, from what I've been told, is a very tight knit community and they really, really pull together as a family. And being that I'm in a compassionate business and I understand that everybody has a job to do and the city engineer is very good at what he does, but I think we have to put computers away, we have to put machines away, and we have to get back to the heart, okay? And right now, these people are grieving and we're depending on this board to give us approval so we can move forward with building this building.
Does anyone have any questions for our witness?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for?
I don't have a question, but I can have seen it. I stay on this board and in the City of Elizabeth, I work in the City of Elizabeth, and my fellow commissioners, we come here and give quality of like better this city of Elizabeth.
Can you call the other ones?
It is not our fault that this application has not been properly prepared to come before us and we can vote. It's not the first, it's not the second, it's not the third or the fourth time that this application has come here and left and not even been heard because it was not submitted properly. We can only vote on something that comes to us as properly submitted. It's not our fault that people are not being properly better. And I take it to heart that you're putting this on us.
Excuse me, no one's blaming anybody. I'm trying to fix the problem, okay? And we now move forward.
Yes.
We get what you need. We're sportsy neighbors, excuse me, sportsy neighbors of the grass there, okay? We're talking about drainage, let's get real.
The way you can fix it is by speaking to your engineers and by reading this application that we can.
We are doing that. We're looking for conditions of the approval. We'd like to move forward with these families that are grieving. Please switch yourself to your place.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Con that you guys have to evaluate this, but what we're asking for is to take back a step and look at this objectively. We haven't whittled it down, albeit there's still issues. The issue has to do with drainage, paving and lighting, the lighting we consent into, the parking, we're going to have that fade, and the drainage we're willing to submit. Now, as a practical matter, it's a very large grass site. There's a lot of areas in this city and this state that are completely impervious to what I was being particularly concerned about. While we will adhere to the requirements of the engineer, I don't think it's a practical matter, anyone on this commission is really concerned that we're going to have a major flooding on a fourteen acre cemetery site. But we will absolutely address those. And because there is a minimal detriment in these last few conditions, we aren't asking for an exception. Whatever the cause is, you want to blame our engineer, you want to blame this person or that person, we're asking for an exception to help the people there caught in the middle of this. It's been going on for a year. We put on the record why we didn't think there would be quite as much of Red King to answer or comply with because of the DCA, because of the experiences of other cemeteries, and because the experience of getting the prior approval from this door, although it was over ten years ago. No one anticipated this long delay, so that's why we're asking for that. And it's up to this board to decide if it approves this with the conditions that we have complied with Mr. Benega's last few requests.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I agree with Ms. Maria Carvalho. I think that if they want us, if they want to move forward on this application and the issues are still outstanding and not satisfied until today, I feel comfortable with this application.
I, let me just make it clear, this is signed by my board and some have stated, this was signed by my board and some have stated, I've read and I've heard tonight. And it behooves me to hear the city talk about that information is not provided to the school and all the forms, we have to still be in the city here. And I hear the gentleman just all the way from this school. Seems like he's got attitude, whatever problem he has, he need to tell me now. Because coming to this school with attitude does not excite us, does not move us. So the best way to come here, we ask for a few things, four months' time. And I think it's a simple thing when you ask for the parking lot to be, excuse me, to be milled and resurfaced is not a lot. Nonprofit, yes, we understand, feel the pain, we know the economy is not the place that need to work. We understand all that. But however, come before this school and we ask for a few items to be taken care of. It's not an idea more, it's not something that can't be reached. So what I had to mean, pull it back, take a look at it, and see if you can comply with these few items. And when you perhaps move forward, if it's been ten years and you're down to almost a couple of months, a couple of weeks, I can't understand what I'm trying to get these taken care of.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your comments and I apologize for the last speaker, but he lives it every day. He's frustrated, he knows this is not something he's used to coming to, but he's just letting out his frustration, so.
I understand. We live in a day also, I have a constituent that live in a day. It comes home to me about the big black slope and the smell and etc. And they live in a day. And so do I. I don't live near here, but I travel to there because I visit my constituents in the very part of the city just by their phone. So I feel their pain also, but I hear it also. But we have to work together, we have to draw and come around so that we can understand each other. And I think we're being reasonable. We're asking for several affixation. And I think we can get it.
I agree with your comments, sorry, I do. And I know those we can get applied, and then we will get applied. You know, and I don't want to mistake our request that this is somehow the board's fault in any way. The request was simply that we believe the comments, while our fault, are mine and will get addressed, and they can get addressed just as easily whether they're approved next time or this time. That was, that was just our fault. But I would like to recall my comments, testified to one comment that you made regarding the cost involved in the parking versus repairing the entire thing compared to doing what we have proposed on the application, because I do think that's relevant and he won't be here next time because of conflict.
One question before he comes up, and maybe you can ask this, you can ask or you can ask. How much areas will be left that's not going to be attended to now?
Well, it is on the plans, we said in the last version of the plans.
How much?
The square foot or twice. I actually recall our engineer, he testified to that via the plans, which we had now.
And while we saw you have just what you know, we empathize and sympathize with your plight, but we rely on our professionals to keep us where we need to be because that's exactly what they do when they advise us as to how we should see.
Understood, thank you.
State your name, sir.
Uh, Con.
A D N A N.
I don't have the integrity for it, but I can separate the circulation. It's about sixty-five to seventy percent of the area there is to the network asking us to rebuild. We are dealing about sixty-five to seventy percent of that.
Director just said that you could ask, you could ask that question. You come, the first day you came back and you sat down and said you don't have a time. Ask for a specific question. How much was? And he asked, he said, the engineers could answer that question. As soon as you sat down, you were just giggling. This is what we've been going through. This is what we've been going through for the last three or four months, six months, almost a year. And wait a minute. I'm looking for how much water we remain in, not going to be completed. That's the last one, square foot. He said you could answer that question. He was very specific.
We can, we can provide you the exact square footage that is going to be replaced. Only thing is not customary to put that information on the plan. But as concerning the layout of the site and what's shown, we will let me there. It's about sixty-five to seventy percent of the area there is to the network asking us to repay.
Here's what I asked for. He can't provide for us tonight. Here's what I want you to provide to us. I want to find out the exact footage that will be made, okay? How much the whole area would cost versus which of the remaining going to cost. I want to know whether the whole area, what, what would you question for the whole area? That's the one. And if you're doing three quarters of it, I need to find out how much remaining costs remaining, I say.
Right. And then something I believe you have, maybe a little, some privacy, but I believe you can answer that question now.
Can I ask you, I'm going to ask you a bunch of questions.
Yeah, we can do that.
I also have a question. Why did your plan show milling?
Because it's a surface that we are, again, like it's the portion that's been damaged on the thing.
How thick is the existing pavement?
You don't, you haven't had any exploratory sampling or things like that?
Basically, I know there, if it's thin, only two inches, the primary, you can't build that. So what's that called, for our plan to building a pavement, it may not be. You can't mill an inch and a half, two inches, you need like six inches of asphalt. And you mill the top of it and then you can repay it. So even the note may not work because you have to go away with the rest of the asphalt. You can't deal two inches of asphalt, that's in the texture, it's just thick.
In order to do that, you need to do some type of like a sample, a wood sample.
There's holes in the condition, the thickness of the mound. So you have to look at that, that normally not be acceptable. So there's still things, I think, I have to, maybe we could start not building. Or could we build, or could you just be rehired? That's what I'm knowing here.
Okay, so I, I want to add to what you're saying and I concur with you saying.
Apparently, what you have there, it doesn't sound like you really have a base on your parking, your parking area. So if you're just going back to one or two inches of a caddy, it's very likely, unlikely to want to be able to build. Unless you have a foundation. So I don't know what you have there. He's been there several times, I've been there a couple of times. Hope you can get the baseball field. And at the top of that company, just then, and what if nine million put us through trying to do the baseball field there? And something that probably doesn't get the right attention given. But right now, when I talk about the day before, we feel we're talking about.
Right now?
Right now, we're talking about the plaza and parking lot. So right now, we're going to stick to the parking lot area. So as soon as you get that information, two months, a moment, ten hours, I think we perhaps move forward.
A little bit for later.
I'd just like to recall Louis Chiles, because he will not be here next time due to conflict. And I'd like him to testify to the parking comment on the question.
Louis Chiles.
Louis, can you describe the decision-making process with regard to the parking costs associated with the recommendations that the engineer repaid the entire parking lot versus the proposed, the proposed repairs that were noted on our plans?
So we, we had several estimates for the payment. We had payment experts come out, they looked at it as if you want, or if you had to do the entire area, about thirty-five thousand dollars that the engineer has recommended. And my next question to him was, well, tell me exactly what needs to be done. And that's what we did. Adman came out and he confirmed the areas that were dis-repaired, the areas that did not need any pay at all. And that's what Adman drew on the plan as we showed. The difference is probably a thousand square feet from I believe. The cost differences, it was seventeen thousand to thirty-five thousand difference. So it's a significant amount of money and we start with the question, well, what's needed? Now, let's just not pay you because, you know, it looks nice and one paid you all the way around. Let's pay what's, what needs to be paid.
I don't have any other questions. We certainly understand that new things need to get submitted for this board. We'll consider that and we will do our best to get those in the next two weeks, Mr. Con. And we know it's the holidays and we have a next hearing right after New Year. So we certainly ask that the board engineers, who's worked with us on many things before, please, you know, try to get back to us when these are submitted, get some contact. So we have this meeting before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Venega?
Do you get it by the nineteenth, you can turn around from January two?
Merry Christmas.
At this point, I'm the chair of the proper procedure to prepare the application to January two. The Marverson's will be first, and the January two, whatever's going on. No further notice would be required in the outcome. But we will.
I have a roll call. Just, just one minute. When you bring the report back, maybe perhaps it's a bit out of call. Bring a back report of exactly what's going to be done to the parking area. It's going to be milled, it's going to be just playing out a cattle on top of it. The whole scenario. Because we talk about a total eighteen thousand dollars deal from this, what we're talking about. Seventeen thousand estimated. I will, I will just shoot that number, what you're going to do exactly and we'll go from there, okay?
Thank you. We'll provide that as well.
So all the issues will be met and you'll have it to get to by the nineteenth, for the January seventh meeting?
Thank you, everybody.
What do we have to call for?
I mean, there's no motion.
No, no, we're just, what are we doing?
Motion can.
To January?
January second.
There's other things.
I'm here, I'm here. I said.
Councilman Lawson?
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Hi.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Carvalho? Commissioner Newton? Commissioner Gonzalez? Secretary Irving?
Hi.
President France? Commissioner here?
Hi.
Thank you. I have one last question, just because the next meeting is an unusual day that they have in years. Do most of the commissioners plan to attend that meeting?
If there's additional reform, then.
Do you have any questions, what's that we need?
Yes, thank you.